Okay, good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, August 8th. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM for the purposes listed on the agenda. Item A: Purchase or Lease of Real Property for the Use of the Public Body, including: Meetings Held for the Purpose of Discussing Whether a Particular Parcel Should Be Acquired; B: Setting of a Price for Sale or Lease of Property Owned by the Public Body; and C: Litigation When an Action Against Affecting or on Behalf of a Particular Public Body Has Been Filed and is Pending Before Court or Administrative Tribunal, or when the Public Body Finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. At this time, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. As a reminder, there's a timer that will quietly beep when three minutes is up, and we ask that you wrap up your thoughts. First on the agenda is Maui Askadon.
Yes. All right, thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank the Board for your service. One of the things I recognize is that y'all have volunteered thousands of hours during your terms, and I really want to let you know I appreciate that as a parent, so thank you for that. I moved to Elmhurst because of the schools. I was living in Chicago, like many of the families here. I had a two-year-old at the time. My wife was pregnant with our second child, and I told my wife, "Honey, Elmhurst has fantastic schools. Let's go there. Our kids are going to get a fantastic education." I think that's a big reason a lot of families are here. And, you know, I'm happy to say my kids now are a rising fourth grader and third grader at Hawthorne. Had a wonderful job. They're doing a wonderful job there, so shout out to Mr. Riordan right there. And I have a three-year-old that's going to start very shortly at Madison Elementary, which my other two had also attended, so shout out to Ms. Conrad as well. Fantastic principal there. And, you know, so I'm invested in the education of my kids. I believe education is what gave me a better life in this country, and that's the best gift we can give any child in our community, is the education we provide them. So the reason that I got interested in the facility plan was, actually, I was coaching YMCA basketball. I coached four seasons with the Y. I coached my son. I love basketball. And a lot of the games were at Lincoln. And, you know, my kids happen to go to Hawthorne, but when I was walking around Lincoln, I heard from some of the families there, and I saw just the shape that that building was in, and I saw this tremendous inequity here in Elmhurst, and the kind of facilities that kids have, just based on which part of Elmhurst they're in. That, I gotta admit, that was quite shocking to me. I didn't expect that. And I joined the CAP, the Community Advisory Team. I joined that, and I learned about the process. And the reality is that everybody here has a different opinion about what should happen, right? And one of my neighbors, they said to me, "You know what? The Board's going to decide if this referendum passes or not." And I corrected that neighbor. I said, "You don't understand how the process works. The Board decides whether we get a voice in that process, and it doesn't even really matter whether that Board member thinks it should pass or not. And they should not put the pressure on themselves to say, 'I think it should pass' or not. It's really more, do you believe that I should have a voice, that my neighbor should have a voice, and all these people that are here should get to decide for ourselves?" And I believe, based on the energy that the community has shown, what I've heard from my neighbors, that we deserve that voice. So I'm here to ask you to not take my voice away, to not take my neighbor's voice away, and to give us the opportunity to decide for ourselves whether we want to fix things like Lincoln, whether we want to make sure that every school is safe, and pay for that for the schools to be safe in that manner. And so I humbly request that you give us that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Edgar Powell.
My name is Edgar Powell. I am a resident of District 205. I'm here because I am concerned about potential violations of the Open Meetings Act by the Board, or just to talk about the allegations a bit more in detail. So I am, in part, here to talk about a specific meeting that you had on May 21st, where you had a closed meeting to discuss the performance or employment of specific employees. The minutes do not indicate whether the Board held a roll call vote during that meeting. Under the Open Meetings Act, the Board cannot hold a closed session unless you meet the following requirements listed in Section 2A. First, you must publicly announce the reason for entering into closed session. Second, you have to conduct a roll call vote on whether the Board should enter into closed session. And third, you have to record the outcome of that roll call vote into the minutes. Now, usually, you comply with that requirement, but in this specific meeting, in which you've already approved the minutes, those minimum requirements have not been met. So I am concerned that the OMA may have been violated during that meeting. This isn't the only one, though. This matter is just one out of many indications that the Board might not be fully compliant with the OMA. Again, we're not completely sure yet, but the Board is already the subject of three other investigations by the Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor for allegedly discussing topics not authorized for closed sessions. Your attorney has already responded to the allegations for the first three cases in writing, but clearly, I think that more work still needs to be done. So these concerns are actually not specific to you. They're not unusual to Elmhurst. If you go down the road on York Road, the City Council has even more problems. They've had at least 12 alleged violations of the OMA this year. So to put that into perspective, you only have four as of right now. So I think that should be somewhat of good news for you. As the Board of Education, your mission is to educate everyone in Elmhurst, so perhaps this could be a learning opportunity to educate the public, yourselves, and other officials in Elmhurst about the need to improve government transparency. You can try to mitigate these concerns by reviewing your procedures and retaking your OMA training, but this effort really needs to involve everyone, not just the Board members. In particular, I noticed that your OMA officer, who happens to be the superintendent as well, has not yet taken annual training on OMA compliance. This is actually required by Section 1.05A of the Act, and also your own, the Board's own policy manual, in particular, Section 2, Part 200 of the policy manual. Therefore, I ask that the Board review this matter and determine whether you aren't in compliance with that requirement. Overall, I appreciate your continued efforts to cooperate with the investigations by the Public Access Counselor, and also your efforts to consider and review any other concerns that are raised to you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Crumry.
Discussion about the Opens Meeting Act. Good preparation for mine. Michael Crumry, 570 West Crockett. These are talking points that I had in stormwater mitigation meetings back in May of 2016. One, I want to thank Mayor Morley and City Manager Grabowski for their continued focus on the goal of providing flood mitigation relief for the greater good of all Elmhurst residents. The remaining, remainder of my talking points will sound familiar because they're same questions I've asked back in 2015 and 2016. While this might not be the legal terminology, the York High School construction expansion completed in 2002 was to include a $1 million payment in lieu of onsite rainwater detention flood mitigation. Yet District 205 and York High School continue to flood their neighbors to the west, and the $1 million fine has not been paid. During the second public stormwater communications meeting held back in July 2015, yes, 2015, District 205 Board of Education President at the time, Jim Collins, stated, quote, "Let's get this 15-year-old issue behind us as quickly as possible," close quote. Yet that issue remains unresolved. July 2015 was over three years ago, 1,100 days ago. When someone buys, sells a home in Elmhurst, the address and the sale price is listed in the local newspaper. This is public information. Websites allow entry of an address, and it provides back the real estate taxes for the home in Elmhurst. Again, this is public information. So how is it possible that Board of Education President Shannon Ebner, an elected official, can say the following comments at the stormwater meeting back in May 2016? Quote, "This is not a place to negotiate." Quote, "The negotiations should happen with the lawyers and David Moyer and Jim," meaning Jim Grabowski, and quote, "You don't negotiate in public." Well, last time I checked, my real estate taxes, they are directly paying for the public services of both the City of Elmhurst and District 205. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Reports, presentations, and discussion. Tonight, we're going to start off with the phone poll results from Strategies 360.
To the Board and also to the community, we are very excited to have Strategies 360 here with us. A few months ago, you charged us with finding more information from the community and hearing their voice, and we were able to put out, through the help of Strategies 360, a phone poll toward the, I would say, the middle of July, and we have those results here today. So I would certainly like to turn the floor over to both Leslie Rogers and Cornelia Treptow to give us those results. Before I do, I would ask that as we're listening to those results, that we hold any kind of questions so that they can get to their report, and then we can come back and certainly be comprehensive or more comprehensive with questioning. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Bev. Yeah, hi. Leslie Rogers from Strategies 360 here. And just giving you a little context again, I know we've been here before talking with you, but we do public opinion research for school districts, K-12 school districts around the nation, and so what you're going to hear today is your specific results, and we will also give you a little context, kind of how, what we're seeing nationally, as well as what we're seeing locally here. And Cornelia Treptow is our head of research, and I will let her take it away.
Hi. Thank you for having us. I'm going to talk a little bit about the methodology of the poll to start off with, just so that we understand sort of the process that we went through and how the poll works. So here we go. So we conducted a live telephone survey of 300 residents of the school district. So a live telephone survey means that we had real people at the other end of the line, so it wasn't a survey that says, you know, like a robot voice says, "Press 1 for A, press 2 for B." We had real people at the other end of the line, which meant that participants, if they needed something repeated or something like that, we could make sure to accommodate them, make sure that things were, you know, pronounced correctly, things like that. We conducted 300 interviews, and to be clear, those are 300 fully completed interviews. So if anyone terminated at any point during an interview, you know, for example, we caught them during dinner, we would replace them with someone else. Those 300 interviews are statistically representative of the district. So that means that we matched the demographics of those 300 people on things like gender, where in the district they live, education level, et cetera, to the census data about the district, to make sure that our 300 people were representative, as though we had asked everybody in the district for their opinion. So it's kind of like when you try a soup, and you try a little spoon of the soup, but you know that the whole soup tastes the same way. So it's kind of a little analogy to help us understand. The interviews were conducted in mid-July, so we started on July 14th, and we continued through to the 21st. We contacted people on both landlines and cellphones, understanding that a lot of people in 2018 nowadays don't have a landline, so we wanted to make sure that we were really giving everybody the chance to participate in the survey. The margin of error for this survey is 5.7%, and you'll hear me talk a little bit about the margin of error as we go through the presentation this evening. So, and we did, I'll explain as we go through, but we followed all research best practices to ensure that order bias and things like that were avoided throughout the survey. Excuse me. So we started off by thinking about the overall sort of understanding of the district. So the first question we asked was, to start thinking about the public schools here in Elmhurst District 205, would you say that you are generally satisfied or dissatisfied with the quality of education children receive in Elmhurst 205's early childhood through 12th grade public schools? And you can see on the graph on the right-hand side, 81% of district residents told us that they are satisfied. 51% of all residents, that's over half of all residents, told us they are very satisfied with the education that kids receive. Just 8% said that they were dissatisfied. On the left-hand side, you can see the results from the poll that we did and presented here last year in the fall. You can see that last year, it was 85% satisfied, 50% very satisfied, and 5% dissatisfied. The difference between the two is, from a research perspective, there is no difference. So those differences, that 4% is within the margin of error, so from our perspective as researchers, we've, the district has maintained its satisfaction level from this, from last year through to this year.
And I'll say, so we do a lot of public opinion research on school districts, and this is a very high number. The 81%, 85% is among some of the highest satisfaction rates that we've seen. So, you know, we work with urban, suburban, rural school districts. So overall, while you might hear, you know, residents have issues here and there, and you're hearing that, you should know that overall, from what we found, that residents are generally very satisfied with the quality of education their students are getting. And keeping in mind, too, that this is a poll of not just parents, right? So we're not just asking, you know, the 25% of people who live here who have kids in the district, but overall, look at the community and their perception of the district.
Yeah. And I will say to add to that, the 51% very satisfied number, that's also particularly high in comparison to what we typically see across the school districts with whom we work. So then we asked a question, I'll read it aloud, "Based on what you have heard or read," and to be clear, that's heard or read, not in the survey, but just sort of in life in general, "Which of the following do you think best describes Elmhurst School District 205's budget situation?" And again, to the right-hand side, you can see the results of this. 43% of district residents believe that the district needs additional funding. 13% overall feel that the district definitely needs additional funding. 46% feel that the district has enough funding, and 21% feel that way differently. I will say that 43%, this is, again, just to reiterate, this is before, in the survey, we've talked anything about funding. This is right off the bat. You know, over 4 in 10 residents are feeling that the district needs additional funding for the work that it's doing. On the left-hand side, you can see the results from the poll that we did last year, and similarly, the numbers, as with the satisfaction level, are maintained. Everything is pretty much within the margin of error. So in terms of that need for funding, we would, from a research perspective, say that it's the same as it was last year. We also asked some questions about tax sensitivity in the district. And so we asked both about local property taxes, sort of overall, so all local property taxes, which is the left-hand graph that you see. We also asked about local property taxes that go towards education. Just one methodological note, in terms of how we conducted the survey, we rotated the question. So about half of that 300 group heard a question about education before they heard about all property taxes, and the other half heard all property taxes before education. We did that to avoid any kind of order bias, so that we hadn't teed up the question for anyone, so it's about 50/50. I'll talk about the graph on the left-hand side first. So we've got 47% of district residents feel that their property taxes are too high. 30% overall feel that they are much too high. Just 1% feel that they're too low. And 49% of residents feel that they're about right. This is, for context, a little bit less tax sensitivity than we have seen, particularly in other suburban school districts that we've worked in, but certainly something to keep in mind in terms of, you know, fiscal responsibility, et cetera. On the right-hand side, you can see that when it comes to education, tax sensitivity is a little bit lower. So 35% of residents, that's a little over a third, feel that their tax, local property taxes that go towards education are too high. 19% much too high. You can see that the comparison there between all property taxes and those for education, it does go down, and it's beyond the margin of error. So we would say that there's a real shift there. 8% of district residents feel that their property taxes are too low, and 49% again. So those about-right people, it's about the same for both of those questions. We also asked some questions about the ballot proposition. To start out with, we read people a very straightforward factual description of the ballot proposition, so I'll read it aloud, as there's a lot of language there. "Elmhurst School District 205 is considering a ballot proposition that would build and equip two school buildings to replace the Field and Lincoln Elementary School buildings. Build and equip additions to and alter, repair, and equip existing buildings, including but not limited to improving security, energy efficiency, and technology infrastructure, providing STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math facilities, and adding classrooms for full-day kindergarten, improve school sites across the district. The ballot proposition will cost a total of $168.5 million," and then the number itself. Obviously, that's a lot of text, and so I just remind you that because we did the live telephone interviews, it meant that if somebody, you know, didn't catch anything the first time, and they asked for it to be repeated, we had the interviewers repeat it for them as needed, you know, two or three times, depending on what they felt they needed to do to be able to answer the questions that followed. So after we asked them the ballot, we read them the ballot proposition language, we said, "Now, let me ask you, do you think that the district should consider doing this or not?" You can see here, 51% of residents felt yes, that the district should consider this. 43% said no. 37% felt yes strongly, and 34% felt, excuse me, felt no strongly. And so this gives us some indication, just having read the ballot title, or excuse me, the ballot proposition language, about how people feel.
And I'd like to just add here, too, just a reminder that this is, you know, people getting this information and making a decision pretty much cold. So the district, this is all still draft form. You haven't decided yet. There's been no informational communications. There's been no big mailers or, you know, any PAC activity. So this is just sort of information just based on reading kind of a draft ballot statement.
So then, $168 million, or $1.5 million is a lot of money, and often difficult for people to contextualize. We see it, you know, whether it's a ballot proposition for education, or a statewide ballot proposition, you know, for libraries, or whatever it is. And so to help contextualize that, and help people understand sort of really, in terms of what the school district is asking for, what that would mean, we offered the following language. "This proposal would increase property taxes in Elmhurst School District 205 by $29.80 per year, per $100,000 of home value, or $149 per year on a $500,000 home. Knowing this, do you think that the district should consider doing this or not?" So we provided some context, but still, to sort of echo what Leslie said, it's based on the very simple language, the very straightforward language. Now we see there's an increase to 55% of residents who say yes, 39% strongly, 40% still say no, 35% strongly. So providing that context does help residents understand a little bit more about what the district is asking for, because those numbers are often so high that, you know, between 150, 200, 300 million, it's very hard to understand in real terms what that actually means for my property tax bill. So those who championed the idea, meaning those people who said yes, we were curious, you know, "Help us understand why it's important. You know, what did you hear when you, you know, before you really get any information about it, when you just heard the proposition language? What was it that you heard that made you feel this way?" So this question is different to all other questions in the survey for two reasons. The first being, it's only asked out of those people who said yes. So if you said yes on the previous question, we then said, "Please tell me what you believe is the most important reason that the district should consider the ballot proposition." The second reason why it's different to every other question in the survey is because for every other question, we say, "Okay, how satisfied are you? Pick from these options." Or we say, you know, "Do you believe that the district should consider this? Yes or no, strongly or not strongly?" In this question, we just asked people to give us what their thoughts were. So we didn't prime them with any options to pick from. It was just, you know, "You've heard a little bit of information from this, you know, what is it that's making you say yes?" So on the phone, it would say, you know, they'd just say, "Leslie, tell me what you believe is the most important reason that the district should consider this ballot proposition." We then verbatim recorded what people said, and then went back after the fact and sort of put them into these buckets so that we could, because it's a quantitative research instrument, quantitatively understand the reasoning behind why people felt that way. So we created, so what we did is, we didn't have any of these pre-created. We took what people said, and from things, as we went through all the verbatim results, we started to see patterns of where people said, you know, "We really need to be future-oriented in preparing kids," and so we sort of created a bucket out of that. So the buckets we created, you can see on the screen, the top three that really popped are, first, with 27%, "The need to be future-oriented, prepare students better, and invest in children." The second one with 23%, "Buildings are old, facilities need to be updated," pieces like that. And we included in that if people gave particular examples. So if they talked about, for example, Lincoln or Field, we made sure to include that, even though it wasn't buildings generically. And then the third one is, "Education is important," and, or they made some kind of positive value statement about the need to invest in education. And that's 21%. I should say, there is overlap here, so if you're wondering why these numbers don't add up entirely to 100, it's because if you said, "Well, you know, the buildings are old and education is important," you got coded as both of those things. So we didn't pigeonhole anyone into one particular option, but whatever they told us, we coded and then added. You'll see the all-day kindergarten got 9%, and safety and security got 7%. There are a lot of people who said other, and in a lot of those cases, it was because people in the community shared very specific examples that didn't really fit into any one particular category, so we kind of put those together. But those three buckets at the top really represent, I think, the big reasons why people feel that this is a good idea for the district to consider. So what you'll see in later slides in this presentation is that we asked people individually about some of the components. So obviously, they heard that big description that included STEM, and included, you know, building maintenance and upgrades and changes and things like that. And so we went through each of those individually, which I'll show you in a second. And then we also shared with them some statements about why it might be important for the district to consider this, and sort of give them some understanding about what's happening in the district. After we did all of that, we share, we asked them again that same question. So now that you've heard a little bit more about what this proposition entails, do you think that the district should consider this? And you can see, all the way on the right-hand side there, that once we grow, excuse me, once we get to the end, 59% of residents say yes, that the district should consider this. 38% say no. 37%, excuse me, 39% say yes strongly. 28% say no strongly. And this graph, this multiple graph, these multiple graphs, this slide, is a really useful understanding of sort of taking a macro view of how the ballot proposition has changed over time. So when we just read the ballot proposition language that I read out to you, that's what that left-hand graph, the initial Ask is. You can see it's 51% say yes. Then after we provided that context, that I said, you know, how much it would be on a $500,000 home, that's where that 55% comes in. So you can see what the tax impact Ask is. And then after we go through the whole survey, you can see that's where the 59% comes in. So as residents are learning more, hearing more, thinking more about the proposition, you can see real growth over the course of the survey. I would also note that a growth of eight points is beyond the margin of error, so from that perspective, we've actually seen real growth, and not just sort of numbers that seems, you know, that are different functionally, but seem similar from a research perspective. So there's real, as district residents learn more, there really is growth in support for wanting to see. in support for wanting to see the district consider this. So this slide has a lot of information on it, so bear with me as I explain it. So this is what we call a battery question. So that means we used the same scale, it was a five-point scale, to ask district residents about each of the individual components that might be included in a ballot proposition. So you can see, we included everything from creating future-focused learning spaces for students that will enhance science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as STEM, security updates to enhance and, excuse me, the entrance and main offices of a number of schools. I won't read them all to you as I set this up. But what we then did is, for each individual one, we asked them, "Do you think that this should be a top priority, a high priority, a medium priority, a low priority, or not a priority for the school district?" We also added a point that, you know, understanding that finances are limited, right, that the school district, you know, has to live within its means, et cetera, and then there are constraints. You know, given that, you know, not everything, we might want everything to be a top priority, but realistically, not everything can be a top priority. So we asked that individually of each of these questions, and then after people had answered, we then created this sort of table, excuse me, this graph that shows where they stood in relation to one another, in addition to where they stand alone. I will say, this order is created out of that, but when we asked the questions in the survey, they were all randomly rotated. So to use the STEM example, some people got it first, some people got it last, some people got it second, third, fourth, fifth, et cetera, to 12. And they were all muddled up and mixed up with each other to avoid any kind of order bias or anything like that as we were conducting the survey. So what does the slide actually say? So the top one, that is the highest priority for residents in the district, is creating more future-focused spaces for STEM. That really, 25% of district residents, that's a quarter of residents, are telling us that it's a top priority for them, 57% say top and high priority. Security updates were also very high, 23%, top priority, 49% top or high priority. I won't go through each one individually, but I will say, the lower sort of half of this list tend to be those more individual, you know, the specific projects, rebuilding Lincoln, rebuilding Field, you know, renovating the auditorium at a school. And what we tend to see, and this is not, certainly not individualized to Elmhurst at all, we tend to see that when we ask these questions about priorities, whether it's for a school district or prioritizing anything, when we get more specific, particularly with schools, people are just unsure. You know, if you don't live near Field and you don't have kids that go there, how often do you go inside? How often do you see what it looks like, what that need to replace is like? And so that's where a lot of this comes from, where if you just don't know, you sort of default to saying, "Well, it can't be a priority, because if it's a priority, I would have heard about it." And so we think that this is, you know, this is not unusual, but the point here is that, you know, given how many people drive by it every day or go into it every day, there are still high numbers of people seeing these individual projects as high priorities for the district to take on. So then what we did was, we asked people, excuse me, we gave people a number of statements about, you know, why the district might need to consider this. And again, everything was rotated and randomized to ensure that there was no order bias in terms of the order in which people heard these statements. And again, these statements are not as long as the ballot proposition, but they're certainly not short one-liners. And so again, you know, as people needed to, they could be repeated to them and et cetera. So for these questions, we said, "Okay, well, when you hear this statement, does it make you more or less likely to support the idea of considering this?" And so what you can see here is, it shows you, so the options were much more, somewhat more, somewhat less, much less, or that it had no real impact. And so this shows the number or the share of residents who said that it either made them much more likely or somewhat more likely, which is that total in the end. You can see here that the top, the top one was this all-access statement, which I'll read aloud. "All Elmhurst School District students should be given the same opportunities regardless of their backgrounds or family's income. These projects will make improvements to every school in our district, so that all students have the same learning, have the same opportunities and a top-quality education." 45% of residents told us it made them much more likely. Now, to put these statements in context, typically, we think that a statement is important to us if we see it sort of get to the early-to-mid thirties. So you can see here, 45%, that's from, in a research terms, when we see that number, whether it's about schools or anything else, we sort of sit up a little straighter in our seats and we think, you know, "I gotta take another look at that, get my glasses out," and say, "Gotta take another look at that," because it's something that garners that higher group. And you can see that 70% on the end there, that 70% of people saying either much more or somewhat more. That's the kind of number that you can't get to if, for example, only men feel that way, or only women feel that way. You have to have this real, like, swell within a community or within a sample universe who feel that way, because you just can't, you know, the law of averages, you just can't get to those numbers without that critical support from across the group. Security is the second one. "These projects will enhance the safety and security of students and staff. Funding security improvements by upgrading entrances will help ensure our children are safe in case of emergency." So another important idea, this sense of safety and security, 37%, much more, 63% more overall. Again, those numbers, not really ones that you can get to with just one group feeling that way, it's really sort of across the district. Smart investment was the third. "Investing in schools now is a smart, efficient, long-term approach to making sure our kids have good schools. It prioritizes our students' most urgent needs and saves money in the long run by addressing problems now, when it's cheaper to deal with." And then finally, master plan. "These projects are part of a long-term master facilities plan. The district has," I'm just gonna read from here, "the district has studied and sought feedback from the community to plan ahead for the next 25 years." I'm not sure what happened.
Do you remember what the dark blue number is?
25.
25?
Thank you.
Thank you.
25%, and then that's 48% overall. So certainly, understanding that access is very important, parity is very important to residents in the district, as is security. They're all, you know, very important to folks in the district, but particularly those two, and particularly if I mentioned getting to 45%, we don't often see that in surveys, and so I definitely did clean my glasses to make sure I'd seen it right when it came in.
Yeah. And I'll say, too, that that's a nice reflection on the district, too, that the idea of equity, access, parity is a high value and a statement. So I think that's something to keep in mind, you know, as you're doing your other work, too, that if you're looking at what the community values, that that really popped highly for a lot of people as a value.
Yeah. And I will also say, we, as we mentioned earlier, we work with a lot of school districts, and that's not always the case. So something to, I think, as members of this community, to feel really proud about. We also, after we talked about the ballot proposition, I should say, it was at this point that we then came back for that final ask, and so this 59% number came after people had seen, had heard both these questions and these statement questions. So that's kind of what the final is at that point. And again, as I said, we saw growth after they had kind of thought about it a little bit more and heard a little bit more. So we also asked questions about all-day kindergarten, which I know that we asked in our previous survey, too. So let me talk to you about some of those findings. So 2018, so the question was, "Would you support or oppose the district offering access to all-day kindergarten to all incoming students?" You can see on the right-hand side there, the 2018 number, 71% say they would support it, 48% would support it strongly. That's, to put that in context, that's half of people in the district, not just parents, not just those who have kindergarteners, or, you know, people who are thinking of having kids soon who would go into kindergarten. These are, you know, people in the, everyone in the district, including those who have, you know, grown-up kids, or no kids, or kids in high school who are well beyond kindergarten, saying that they would support the district offering this to parents.
Strongly support.
Yeah. And half of them, half of everyone strongly supporting it. 24% of district residents do oppose it, 17% strongly. But I think the real takeaway here, like I said to you, you know, with the, with the statement, we can't really get to 71% unless there are wide swaths of the community feeling that way. I mean, that's almost three-quarters of residents feeling this way. To put that in context, from 2017, it was 51% strongly, it's 48% strongly. So in terms of those who feel, you know, really passionately about this, that number is within the margin of error, and so we would see that as no change from the last time that we asked this. You can see that support has decreased slightly outside of the margin of error, gone down from 81% to 71%. For 71%, I mean, I think if we walk around, we've all got lots of opinions, and it's often hard to get people to agree to things. So that we got 70% of the district agreeing to this, I think, is a real sign that a lot of people feel this way. In addition to this, we also asked a question, understanding that there would be additional costs associated with extending and expanding kindergarten to be available all day to those who wish to participate in it or take advantage of it, that there would be additional costs associated with that. And so what we then asked was, okay, so given these additional costs, and we provided some examples, you know, additional classroom space, additional, you know, teachers, supplies in general, that kind of thing, who do you think should be responsible for those additional costs? And you can see here, we offered three options. We offered the school district, parents who choose to avail themselves of all-day kindergarten, or should the parents, should those parents and the district spread the cost? Just from a logistical standpoint, the way we asked this is that we rotated it. So when you just heard it then, we had school district, then parents, then a share. Whereas when we called it during the survey, some people heard parents first, then school district. And again, that's another way in which we try to avoid any kind of order bias, because it stops people from saying, "Oh, school district would definitely feel that way," before they hear the other options. I will say also, when we conduct the survey, we have, we make sure that everybody hears the entirety of the question. So if someone hears school district and says, "Oh, definitely the school district," our interviewer would say, "Well, you know, thank you for your opinion. I have to read the whole question in its entirety before you can give me your response." And that's true of any question in the survey, not just this one, that everybody has to listen to everything before they can provide a response, or a response that we take down. You can see here, then, that far and away, 46% of residents, so that's almost half of residents, feel that the district and parents should share that cost between them, 29% feel that the parents should shoulder that cost, and 22% the school district. On the left-hand side, you can see the results from when we asked the question identically in 2017, and all the shifts there are within the margin of error. So again, in terms of where people feel, we would say that it's exactly the same as it was, excuse me, in 2017. So, yeah, so that was kind of combined with the other question about all-day kindergarten. And those were our findings from the survey. So I'm happy to take any questions or explain anything further.
Thank you. Questions? Margaret?
Thank you very much for that presentation. It was very helpful to hear what our community thinks about this. One thing that stood out to me, and I'm wondering, and I know this is not information in the survey, but I've just gotta put this out there. It was interesting that as people got more knowledge about the ballot proposition, it went up, as you showed, and up past the margin of error. What does it mean, or does it mean anything, over a year, when people had more information about all-day kindergarten, it went down, past the, past the margin of error?
Yeah. I think that's a good question. I think it's difficult to answer it based solely on the survey data. I think often, too, the type of information is different, right? So it's, the premise of the question, sort of, they're not really apples-to-apples that we're comparing. On one, we're talking about this ballot proposition, you know, should we do this? It encompasses many areas, which does include all-day kindergarten. And the other one is that all-day kindergarten piece over the year. Now, of course, the district does a lot of outreach in various ways to help people understand what's going on in the district and educational issues in the district. But, you know, not everybody in that 300 group, firstly, it's not the same 300 group we interviewed last time, it's all randomly done to give everybody the opportunity, but we also have no control about what that first 300 group in 2017 heard through to 2018. Whereas here, we had a captive audience where we could say, we knew we were interviewing the same people, and we, you know, they had to listen to everything, as I said. If they said, "Oh, I don't wanna listen to this anymore," and put the phone down on us, we didn't include them, we called someone else, you know, to replace them. So I think it's a little, you know, it's not quite apple, it's a good question, but it's not quite apples-to-apples. And I think having that captive audience meant that we really know everyone got that information, whereas, you know, as it's been discussed since 2017 to now, we have no way of knowing what people heard coming into this survey.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who else?
May I add something to what you were saying? We did have a little bit of a discussion in preparation for tonight about that difference in the number from 2017 to 2018. We also have to remember that we have had some conversations about the boundaries in there that also may be a part of that consideration for the public.
First of all, Bev, I think that's a good observation. I think, it's my perception, at least, that most people consider boundary changes tightly associated with all-day kindergarten, and all-day kindergarten being the only reason for any suggested boundary changes. So I can see where that might have affected the results. Your slide about sharing costs for all-day kindergarten, do we have any way to know what people are thinking if, under the category of district and parents share the costs, if the district, school district puts up the capital cost for classrooms, et cetera, and parents pay for the operational costs, you know, being the teacher and curriculum materials, do we have any idea if people perceive that as cost-sharing?
Yeah. So in the survey, we combined the three together. So we did, unfortunately, it's not on the screen now, but we did specifically mention classroom space, teachers, and supplies, so as to include both operational costs as well as capital costs. And given that people did say, you know, 46% of residents are telling us that they would like those costs shared, but individually, we didn't break them out. So there's no real way to know from the survey findings whether or not people see it that way. But, you know, we didn't just say, you know, classroom spaces, and we didn't just say, you know, operational costs. And so to that end, we can conclude that there's some sort of distribution between the two. Whether or not we can separate them, the survey can't tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question as much as, I think this shows it was a good, it was useful that we really needed to do this. And I like the contextual information that you've provided, you know, to help us move even to the next steps and understand, you know, what our community is really, really wants. And I know the vote is the ultimate, but at least gives us an indicator. I think it also showed that the community is invested with the facilities and the facility needs, which it was a lot more obvious in this survey than I have heard previously.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I think when we look at, I mean, I know that we've talked about this, but when we look at the facilities needs, it's really throughout the survey. This idea that education is really important to the community is one that we see right from the get-go. You know, it's something that people can be proud of in Elmhurst, it's something that people want to see invested in. When we ask about the individual pieces, it's really something that rises to the top. And we see that equity, that parity piece, ensuring that all kids in the district have access. So I think it's, education's really a core value for this community.
Yeah. And I would say, too, sorry you get a slight
Yeah. And I would say, too, sorry, you get a slight Wisconsin accent here instead of the British one. But what I would say is, what this tells me is that you have kind of a baseline level of support, but with communications and education, people, we are seeing an increase. So, you know, generally, what we look for something like this is, are people immediately opposed, or do they feel negatively against the district? And if so, it's time to course correct and figure out what's going on. But here, we're seeing a baseline level of support that with some phrases and some statements that talk about the need, you see movement. And that's what you want to see in a survey like this.
Yeah. And one more thing from me. I would just reiterate what we said at the beginning, that the satisfaction level is really high here. It's some of the highest that we've seen across districts that we work in across the U.S. You know, we work nationally, and this is something to really be proud of. And I think there's some aspect of, you know, you're doing really well. What do we need to maintain this high level of education that kids receive in our district?
Yeah, that's a good thing. John?
Not to dive into too much detail, but one thing kind of jumped out at me was the question, do you think the district should consider doing this? Not should, do you think the district should do this? Do you think some people perceive the question maybe is, should the district think about this?
I think for sure that's the case. From the research that we've done, and not just related to education pieces, it's often the way we think about it, you know, should we consider this? Because it's saying, you know, we don't want the district to fiat anything, but we want the district to be really thinking about this and think carefully about it. So it's sort of designed that way, as opposed to people, you know, necessarily telling the district what to do, because obviously voters have the final say on any ballot proposition. But we want the district to be really considering what makes the most sense to go on that ballot. So yes is your answer. I think it's just a choice of words. Yeah. And it's something that we use across the work that we do. We just find that particular words tend to be non-invasive, if that makes sense. It's designed to sort of be open and understanding.
But, John, are you thinking, is it, is there a big difference between, I'll say yes, versus think about it? And is, do you have any insight into that? First question, John, is that what you're thinking? And if it is, what's your expertise on it?
I just want to caution against perceiving this as, yes, these are people that will support a referendum. There are people, it sounds like the question was, but I understand you're coloring a response, and it's not a definite response. It is...
Yeah. I would also add, I think, two things. Firstly, obviously, because this is public funds, we didn't, you know, we don't want to dive into voters, et cetera. We want, you know, we as the, you as the school board represent everybody in the whole community. So we wanted to include that, which is why it's all residents. I would say, secondly, too, you know, there's some aspect of wanting to understand where the district stands as you make decisions, right? You want to be able to be responsive to the way the district feels. And so this poll really helps you understand, you know, we're considering it. Do you feel like it's the right thing for us to consider? Do you feel like this is something, an area where we need to, you know, be thinking about things? Obviously, there's a lot of data about how old schools are, how much it would cost to rebuild versus renovate, how much it would cost to produce those future-focused, expanded learning spaces. So you have all of that data, but what this tells you is, you know, as you come into contact with parents every day and things like that, we really wanted to be able to give you a snapshot of how the whole district feels, so that you were able to take that into account in making your decisions, too. So that's sort of where this is designed to be. But it's not, you know, we don't want to say, would you vote for this? Because we want to be all-inclusive, and we want to say, is this something that we should consider, understanding that we work for you?
Okay, thank you. That, and it's a really good report. I feel like, I don't know, I learned a lot. So, thank you very much. Hope you still have a voice. All right, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is, we will begin discussing the draft master facilities plan.
So, just by way of the agenda, we just want to review the master plan a little bit, and just kind of collectively ensure that we have a brief review of the work that's been done, because it has been a lot of work over a long period of time. And then, if we're going to do this in November, there needs to be a vote at the August 14 meeting to place the question on the ballot. And so we need to clarify if the board is interested in moving in that direction. And then, if so, take a look at the language of the draft question, and see if we believe that that's appropriate, or if there are some things that we would like to revise prior to Tuesday. So that, because what we vote on Tuesday, that's what goes on the ballot. And that is what we are able to do if it passes, based on, you know, the community's vote. So you can go to the next one. So that's what I just discussed a little bit there. And just kind of lays it out a little more succinctly, I guess. And Dave, you can keep going. So we talked about the phone polls, so next one. So the first thing I'm going to do is, I'm just going to touch on and remind people some of the various thinking that went into why the draft master plan looks the way it currently does, based on the community engagement process that started all the way back with Focus 205. And then Todd is going to talk a little bit about our current state of facilities. And then I will take it back and just review the proposed site improvements across the district. And then Chris will talk a little bit about what options we potentially have if we do not move in the direction of a referendum to address some of these issues that we have. So, next one, please. All right. So, there was an interest expressed to develop a long-range master plan, not necessarily kind of a short-term Band-Aid type of approach. And so this is a multi-decade solution, and built within the draft plan is flexibility for future boards to address potential enrollment growth, program changes, or other types of things that may come up down the road. Aging infrastructure, obviously, our two oldest elementary schools are examples of what's addressed in here. Safety and security upgrades at all the schools that are not up to appropriate standards. Parity for all students across the district, including students that have special needs, including students that are not necessarily going to be at a building that is new but receives renovations. So those things are all taken into account in the planning process. The future-ready learning that you heard about in the phone poll, that had resonated in the thought exchange survey, it had resonated in the various other types of community engagement that we've done up to this point. So that being STEM spaces, media centers, maker spaces, renovated labs, and all of those types of things that we've been talking about. Technology infrastructure, there's a need to address that in conjunction with the facility upgrades, balancing enrollment across the district so that we can better manage class size, and then also ensuring that basic maintenance needs such as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, as Todd will discuss here in a minute, because as our buildings get older, that infrastructure is becoming more expensive and difficult to maintain. So Todd, if you would go up to the podium, please. This is Todd Schmidt, our new director of facilities, and I for one can tell you that I am very happy that he's here.
Thank you. No, just one slide. A lot of my talking. Thank you. In the few weeks that I've been here touring all the facilities, talking with the principals, talking with our maintenance staff, talking with our building custodians, and just looking in our boiler rooms, we have some good buildings. We have buildings that are in desperate need of some maintenance equipment upgrades in there for capital investments. And we have some that are fairly new, but yet the equipment within those buildings are towards their life cycle that they need for replacement. We don't really have a life cycle replacement plan, whereas if we put a boiler into a building in 2002, it's supposed to last for only 15 years, and it's 16 years into it. The reason I say that is, one of our facilities right now, there's four boilers that were installed 20 years ago. One of them died five years ago, still dead. They're running off of three. Another one just died last winter, so they're off of two. Those same type of boilers, we know, they started dying at 15 years. York, the addition at 2002, or, yeah, two, those boilers now are 16 years old, and there's 16 of them out there. We should start replacing those right now. We already have three hot water, domestic hot water boilers out at York right now. One of them is dead. Those are 15 years old. That's where I look at the refresh plan and the life cycle analysis on everything. And it's just not the boilers, it's the components with it. I'll kind of go, keep going back to York, because I spent the most time out there, because it's such a large building, and the mechanical system does need some work out there, that they have frequency drives out there that control the air handler units for the big buildings. Those are failing right now. We've already replaced some pumps and some motors out there, and then there's another one ready to fail. Plus, I did go up on the roof and listen to some of the noise issues out there, too. So I spent some time up there. But as we look at it, even with the interior finishes that we have with exterior doors, the windows, the tuck pointing, building automation and temperature controls out here is really something that we have to address. And that's something that can help us with providing a better comfort of the facilities, plus help us with energy conservation out there. There's a lot of things that we need to do. And we can't do that really without that upfront infusion of that cash in there, to get us to a level where I can sit there and maintain the buildings on a more of a proactive approach instead of a run-to-failure mode that we're kind of in right now. The buildings do need a lot of TLC. That last little bullet was just for one of the principals, as talking with her today, that they'd need some of that. We don't have the refresh plan for carpet, for flooring. Even at York, in the new addition of 2002, we've replaced a small section of the corridor this year with our in-house crew. The rest of it needs to be replaced. Looking at painting our facilities, we do a little bit of painting in-house, but if you want to sit there and repaint these buildings every eight to 10 years, if we do it without that upfront going in, painting a building a year, we're never going to get caught up on this. So when we sit there and use some of our operating maintenance funds for this, it's kind of put in Band-Aids. It's really not getting out ahead of the curve. I see a lot of opportunities out here. We can do a lot of energy efficiency on some of this equipment. We can provide a better, comfortable environment, a safer environment. Paving and drainage are kind of an issue, as I kind of looked at that yesterday with the rain. But that's kind of where we're at right now. Once we go in this for the, the plan that I look to do within the next six months is develop that full life cycle refresh plan out there for the next 10 to 15 years. So when we sit there and we look at this stuff, we can get out there ahead of it, instead of wait until it fails. On some of these boilers in one of our elementary schools, there's a 1953 boiler, two steam boilers down there. Those fail right in the middle of the year. For one, we're going to have to cut a hole in the side of the wall to get them in there. But if they do fail, then we lose heat for that building. So that's the one thing that we have to start looking at, is it's a 60-plus-year-old boiler. It's going to fail, just a matter of when it fails. We're just replacing some coils at Hawthorne that failed a couple, first part of this year. So some of the newer equipment is even failing, and we need to replace it. So that's just kind of a little bit of where we're at right now, some of the buildings and some of the things that I've looked at and I've seen out there. Any questions?
I just have a quick question before I let, can you just, how much is a boiler?
Depends on what building. If, like, these ones, these seams out there, it's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. Some of the small modular boilers are going to be less than that. But these, like with this building, it's going to be a couple hundred grand to sit there. And then you have to look at what other components that you have to do to, if you're replacing that boiler, do you do pumps, the valves, the actuators, and the building automation and all that stuff with it, too, which is going to add to that cost.
All right. Margaret, did you?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. One, probably directly to you, Todd, and I think you mentioned that you would, you'd be coming back at some point in time, and I don't know how many weeks you said, with more information about what this refresh plan would look like to include the categories that you mentioned, life cycle, building automation, and...
It's going to go with everything. I'm looking at by the end of this year in December to give the life cycle. And we're going to look at, right now, we're doing the analysis and the audit of the MEPs, which is very critical. And then we'll do the building envelope along with the roof. And then we'll look at the interior finishes, exterior doors. So we're going to have about 10 to 12 different categories out there. And then those will break down to some subcategories. But it'll be detailed out there, so that we'll sit there and we'll assign dollar values to each one of that, so we know, okay, in 2021, we're going to need X amount of dollars, and here's the categories. And then we can break it down into buildings.
And then, thank you for that. And I'll be looking forward to that in the December timeframe. Something else that I thought I heard you say was that there would be the need for some type of initial influx of dollars to accomplish that. And I just want to go back to Dave to help me on this, is that something that is clarified in our statement that we could use that influx of cash for that in our ballot proposition?
Yes. Our statement, our bond attorneys have previewed the statement to make sure it's consistent with the law that allows us to, the flexibility to do these projects at these buildings across the district. So it would be inclusive, once we get design plans, once we know which buildings are, you know, if we go through with the current plan, for example, Todd will know which buildings are going to be new, and then he will reallocate money within his long-term plan to other areas across the district. And then we can, you know, begin reinvesting in those other buildings. And so we have made sure that we have enough flexibility to address needs at all sites across the district in the way the language is written.
Thank you.
The board has been referencing for several years now a 10-year maintenance plan or facility plan. So I'm wondering, are you going to start with that, or we're not going to use that, and there'll be something else?
It'll be a component of it, because there's some things on there that we have to look at. But when I look at, when I say life cycle, it's the life cycle maintenance capital plan, is we look at the age. I think a lot of the things that were developed on that 10-year plan are just run-to-failure. We just know they're dead. This is going to be a combination of that, and also looking at being proactive and saying, okay, if it's coming up timeline for this thing, this individual component to be refreshed, or it's past its life cycle of eight years or 10 years, to start looking at that and saying, this is when we need to start allocating money and evaluating that system. And so we set some fundings aside and say, this boiler's only going to work last 15 years. So we got to start looking at it at 13 and 14 years to start allocating funds for that. So it's just going to be detailed out on all that. And most of it's going to be on years, life expectancy of the years. Now, just because, you know, as we look at that, and then we'll have to look at the categories of how we want to do that, if as a district, we feel that we should replace carpeting every eight years, or maybe it's six years, do we want to repaint all the classrooms, how many years? And that's going to determine of when that slides out there, on the years, future years.
Todd, we kind of used a rule of thumb of a dollar per square foot, or translates to a million and a half dollars a year for maintenance. I sensed you might be coming back with a figure that's higher than that.
It's a possibility it can. Right now, I can't put a number to that figure, because quite frankly, some of this equipment out there, there's not detailed records out there of, I know exactly how old it is. Some of these boilers look, because I went down there, crawled underneath and saw the manufacturing date of 1997, things like that. I don't have that comprehensive list to say when these windows were put in there, when these were boilers, when these controls, the chillers and all that. So we're developing that list right now. And then, once we develop that list, and then working with White and possibly ICI to put some cost to that, then I'll know where that's at. I don't want to throw a number out there right now.
I'm not asking for one. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So you alluded to it a little bit, but do you, and I know you can't give a number, obviously, but do you see, by doing that and working on, you know, the life cycles and how you, like, are we going to start gaining efficiencies in our energy cost and, you know... know, like, there's, like, those are sometimes hidden costs that, because we have buildings with multiple heating and cooling.
Yes, we'll gain efficiencies on our energy consumption. But as we sit there and put in some new equipment, we have to look that, especially if we go in air-conditioned building, you're going to increase some energy. But hopefully, you can offset that additional cost by energy conservation throughout the rest of the building. You put new windows out there. Definitely the building automation systems. From what I've heard, it's some of these buildings are all over the place, from freezing to, you know, 95 degrees. So if we can balance that out a little bit, that's going to save us money, along with these building automation systems to help with the scheduling of the buildings. Obviously, whenever you, you can save money when you turn stuff off. So if we start doing that, putting occupancy sensors on a lot of our buildings, and obviously retrofitting everything over to LEDs, we're going to definitely gain some energy efficiencies there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Welcome officially. Okay.
Okay. So throughout this process, and based in large part on community feedback, there were different decisions, different decision points that needed to be made in order to get to a final concept, or at least to where we are at today. And so I've listed a few of them. There was a determination to move toward a new field school versus a renovated school. Then, the space for all-day kindergarten, we had gone through some conversations about the cost of that program. And what I will suggest is that we establish a kindergarten committee that take, that includes some board members, our finance people are learning and teaching people, parents across the district. And some of the specific decisions that need to be made about the fee structure, I don't think that that has to be decided on August 14. I think that the board can decide prior to November, has enough time to decide what information it thinks the community actually has to have about that issue before it makes its vote. But we did take a look at the total cost of the program being about a million dollars, and gave some estimates of fee waiver participation and covering the full cost of the program with tuition, as well as an example that I gave you recently with an assumption of 20% of the students above the fee waiver line, paying an arbitrary tiered tuition dollar amount of $1,000, just to pick a number to try to give people a little bit of an idea of how that cost could move if we adjust some of the, some of the tuition based on individual income. But there's a lot of variables in there as to how many points you want to include in a tiered system and how much, if you want to try to recover the full cost of the program. And so my suggestion was that that could be, as we explained in the, when we showed the future community engagement process, there are a lot of elements of this plan that are going to include future, future opportunities for community engagement, such as the design plans at each of the individual sites and other things like that. And it would seem to me that that would be something that we could get some greater involvement, perhaps with a recommendation that comes to the board. And we could more scientifically take a look at costs and financing that program. We took a look at various different boundary options, and we took a look at the community feedback and some of the various different things that the community was telling us was that it wanted to preserve walking neighborhoods. And that we, so we tried to come up with a way to minimize the impact on as many people as possible and still be able to find the space for all-day kindergarten within the site restrictions that we have at various sites across the district. Size of the lots, for example, and different things vary. And so we came up with the option D modified and talked about having liberal grandfathering provisions. So I will get into that on the next slide. And then, the community engagement piece talked about cost. And many, much of the feedback that came out of there was that there seemed to be a willingness to look at what we called Option 4B, which was the highest cost option that we put out in front of people. So that's what we feel tested in the phone poll, and you saw some of that information just recently. And then, we did take into account various different things. The plan did evolve over the last several months based on input. And so I gave a couple of examples there. Stage and two additional classrooms at Fisher, for example, and an interest in trying to do something about remediating the noise of the York roof units that our neighbors obviously don't appreciate. And so, so those are, that's kind of a reminder of a lot of the various different things that we've been working through over time here. And then, you know, what's left is basically a decision, do we go in November, what dollar amount, and what language, if that is the decision. And then, the design process and additional community engagement. And that would occur, as well as the informational piece that would have to occur between now and November, and then the additional that occurs if a referendum is successful. So that's a little bit of a reminder about where we've been. This is a little bit of a reminder, I guess, about the actual boundaries. And so what we did is...
Sorry. Chris?
Can we just go back? I mean, we, all-day kindergarten, just, I mean, we wanted to talk about it at this meeting, and there's no other slide in here about it, I don't think, right?
Well, it was in the phone poll, and then, yes, it's reflected here, but there's no specific other...
Conversation after this. So, so now, huh?
All right. What's your question?
So, I mean, I think, you know, as I thought about this a lot, I think ultimately, the decision on how to implement all-day kindergarten will be left to a future board at some point. I think for us to definitively declare the path forward now is subject to change anyway, so recognizing that. That said, I think the conversations that we've had have been about making sure that we're not, we're not presenting a future board with a difficult problem to solve and kicking a can down the road. And, and so, you know, I like the idea of a committee as you start to put details on the, you know, flesh on the bone around it. But I think that based upon the poll, and based upon the conversations that we've had, I mean, it seems like as we sit here right now, there are some outlines of a likely path forward, or a set of principles around how we would like to see the group work. And, or all-day kindergarten work. And I think, you know, some of the things that I've heard, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I would like to put a stake in this thing now, so we don't keep wandering around with it. One is, I think something that we heard early on, which was, you know, a desire to make it available for all. And I think that what Dave has shown us is the, that there potentially is the ability to do that while maintaining the second point, which is some sort of cost-neutralness to it, such that it does not require sacrifices from other parts of education here. Which sounds like the most logical, again, this ultimately will be decided by, you know, a committee and a future board officially voting on it when the, you know, if and when the facilities are finished. But it sounds like there's a fee component, you know, some kind of sliding scale or waiver in there. How we do that, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of questions, and that means, that's not for tonight. And that's probably a good idea to have a committee put together to start talking about how we create a fee structure such that everyone actually has it available regardless of need, and that it's cost-neutral to the district. So, I mean, I think that's kind of where I landed on all-day kindergarten as the most likely outcome. So if I'm asked to talk about it in the public, as they say, what's going on with all-day kindergarten, I would say, the most likely approach, if you, if I were the one deciding, would be something like this. And, and for me, that's, I want to be able to get to that point. And I think the phone poll helped a lot in kind of reinforcing the idea that I think the community expects the folks that use it to pay for at least part of it. I'm adding in the idea of wanting to have it available for all folks. And I think we can get there. So I would just like to, right now, kind of once and for all, just get the board's input on, can we get to a point where we think that's probably the most likely approach, and that's what I would recommend to future boards when they go to implement this?
Karen?
Chris, I agree with you. I mean, I think the poll was very helpful in solidifying the approach that, or the parameters of which we take, what have we heard, what do we know? And it's the best data that we have now to say, you know, this is what we have to do. It has to be cost-neutral to the district because we don't want to, we haven't asked the question, would you cut something else to offer all-day kindergarten? So, I'm with you. I think the data in this last poll solidified what seemed to be coming up as what we need to do at this point, given in three or four years, other factors might come into play. But we're always making the decisions based on new data.
Yeah, I agree, too. I mean, looking at all of the figures about all-day kindergarten, we've been studying this for a while with the survey, the study, Steve Cordigan's study. So at a $2,000 tuition, the data shows that there's an 83% enrollment, which is pretty high. And so then that leaves a 17%. And if we, we can do fee waivers for, you know, there's listed here, 6, 8, or 10%. And then also, for the rest of that 17%, find, you know, other groups, committees can find ways to service, like that 17%, you know, that doesn't participate based on other districts that have done all-day kindergarten. So I agree, there's ways to do it, to make it cost-neutral, because I think the community, they want parity, but they also want us to share the burden, too. Yeah.
And did you have something? Okay, Jim. Jim, go ahead.
I'll throw my hat in the I agree ring as well. I support the idea of a committee to help figure out the details that include board members, community members, parents, teachers, staff, et cetera. And I would go one step further, and I encourage to begin a pilot program as soon as practical. That way, parents who have questions about, do I want to enroll my kid in the District 205 all-day kindergarten program, can actually see a classroom in action. And it allows our staff to, you know, modify and enhance the program based upon experience before it's rolled out to the entire district.
So that's, okay, I'm sorry.
I wanted to add my view. I agree, a different board. But I don't think we have to bind that other board. That other board might not want cost neutrality. They might find this essential. And equity requires that we get to the level where there's 99%, which I think it was District 203, and another district, when they did it with, without tuition, they got to 97, 98, 99%. And the future board may determine that's important enough, that's in keeping with their vision of what a public school is, and that they might want to make changes to go that way. So I wouldn't want to bias that future board's decision. I think they're entitled to make the decision.
So the discussion about all-day kindergarten, and I, too, am in agreement that having some type of all-day kindergarten group, look at this and make some additional decisions to go back. I think that's a very good idea. Kind of building on Jim's point about a pilot, and I'm going to put a couple of points together. The idea of a pilot, the assumption that everyone will participate in an all-day kindergarten if it was made available, and an assumption that year one, there will be a high percentage. Those, those three things to me, at this point, are not evident. I think the first year, we will not reach what our full potential is, because it is the first year. I believe that, and only time will tell, I believe that everyone will not choose a all-day kindergarten. And the challenge will be for those individual schools who have two, three, five, maybe 10 people who don't want their children in all-day kindergarten, how we manage that process. So those are some of those thoughts that I think this, this, this group, this kindergarten group, needs to consider and work through and have different contingency plans to try to see what that might look like, as well as a building of what the cost of. If, if the, if the total participation rate would be perhaps 85%, what would it be the first year? Would it be 50, then building to 85? So I think those are some factors that need to be included in that all-day kindergarten group. I also, and I know we're going to get to this slide, but it's really difficult for me to separate these two. And it is the boundary discussion that's tied to all-day kindergarten, or is not tied to. But in people's minds, perceptions, it is. And even though it's, it's mentioned up here that Option D modified with some type of liberal grandfathering has been quote "decided," I, two things. One, I think that needs to be a discussion that is continually reviewed as it gets closer to what the real numbers for schools are going to look like. Because at this point in time, I think where we see some of the highest, the highest enrollment numbers at different schools, we know that has changed over the years. At one point in time, I believe Fisher was at a very high capacity. And without any boundary changes whatsoever, that number has gone down. So I think we need to allow some flexibility in that decision. And I am very happy to see that it's not at anywhere reflected in the ballot proposition question. So again, I think those are pieces that we need to consider, whether it's considered in this all-day kindergarten group or some other group. That's a discussion that needs to be included.
So I just, I want to circle back to the kindergarten tuition piece, and we'll come back to the boundary piece. I agree with you, Chris. I think, you know, a group that, you know, it's hard to make a decision for five years down the road that may not be, might not be any of us, who knows? So I, I really, I agree with that. I think that you don't want to put somebody, give somebody a commitment that they can't uphold, and put them in a really bad position. So, and I think the community should have the opportunity to work on how we could potentially offer it to everyone without cost, if that's a reality in five years, or work out a tiered system, whatever, you know, the people invested and want to do the work. And then that discussion can circle back. So is that where we all are, then? In agreement with the tuition, all-day kindergarten piece? Okay. So, did you have something else to say?
Well, I was just going to say, if, if we can revisit the idea of a pilot at a learning and teaching committee meeting or some other venue, a pilot is possible. There's pros and cons that I think we should talk about, but we're certainly not opposed to a pilot concept. If that's the direction the board wants to go, we can show you some of the types of things we would probably need to do to make that work. things we would probably need to do to make that work.
Is it fair to ask that that would have to, you could, we could only consider a pilot if we have the space, right?
Well, I think, I think Margaret makes a good point. The first year, we don't know for sure what the demand will be. We also don't know for sure if people aren't able to have space at their existing school, will they be willing to, to participate in a different school where there is space? So, but it, it is entirely possible that, that by a lottery system or whatever, that because we don't have the space at all of our schools currently, that there might be people that are interested that do not have the opportunity to participate in the pilot, and that could cause some problems. So, with those other things, we'd have to look at, among other things. So, on this slide, option D modified, what you see is the area in the dotted line east of York Road, that, that is, that change is that those students would be in the Edison Boundary, but in the green area that you see, three blocks east to Kenmore, those students would have the choice of going to either Hawthorne or Edison. And that, that was the way we tried to preserve the walking concerns that, that came out by a lot of people. The yellow area south of Butterfield Road would also be part of the Edison Attendance Center. Those students are currently bused to Jackson, and under this plan would be bused to Edison instead. That would allow us to free up some space at Jackson, which currently has, music is on the stage there, for example, and has, is not a site based on parking, traffic, lot size, and other factors, not ideal for, for adding additional space. So, that, that's where we left it last. That would not equalize the facility utilization across the district as, as nicely as some of the other options that we looked at would. But it does accomplish virtually all of the other goals in terms of space for all-day kindergarten, flexibility for future boards, helps us balance class sizes, and it does create the ability to manage the plan during construction with, with permanent space that could then be utilized in the future as opposed to needing to use temporary space to house students during, during that, those periods of time. So, so that, that was, that was where we, where we left it last. And then there was an interest in trying to have a, a, a very liberal approach to the grandfathering. And we are able to do that because the schools affected by the, this particular boundary option, Hawthorne and Edison, would have the capacity to where we could manage that enrollment over a period of time such that we could accommodate, we could accommodate a, a rather liberal approach to that. And so, what, what was expressed to us by the board was that instead of taking a look at all kinds of options about siblings and how far down do you go and all that kind of stuff, was take a look at the purchase date of, of the home. So, the board, if, if this is successful in November, and then we have our design plans, and, and we're able to take a look at, at the, the dates of the project and, and the completion dates of the project, the board simply can pick a date and say that if you purchase your home after that date, the, the new boundaries would apply. If you purchased your home prior to that date, you would be able to attend the school that you anticipated you were going to be going to at the time of your purchase. However, we also would be able to provide the option for those families to go to the other school if they actually, you know, would like to do that. So, I don't know if people would like me to address this slide any further, but that is, to the best of my ability, a summary of what was discussed over the last several months.
So, Margaret, just to come back then to your point, are you, so correct me if I'm not interpreting this, are you looking for us to go back to this, like, I don't know, like in a year or in a ti, like have a time or have a committee, something that looks at it again to, as enrollment can cha, can change, seeing as this is five years, in a fastest case scenario, it's five years out, which we all know things can change. So, could you articulate what you're looking for potentially, or what you're thinking?
Thank you very much, Karen. Yes. So, we've had quite a few discussions about boundaries. And I think what we've come up with is that there is no easy answer, and in my opinion, there is no fair answer for any of the options that were suggested. So, based on that, we also know, as you mentioned, we also know that populations change in schools, and I highlighted one, and there are many others where the population of a school looked like it was going to be at capacity, and five years later, there's a change. So, I think it's, while it is important and transparent that we have this discussion, that there may be the need for boundaries adjustments, and this could be what we go toward. We also need to be realistic and say, this also might not suit what is needed. It might be, at some point in time, irrelevant to what is needed. So, I am suggesting that this be a continual discussion point, and that we do not, obviously do not include it in any ballot proposition question, and remain open to the idea that there may or may not be this option D to be included. So, I guess that's my thought on here, the rationale, and definitely would be open to hear from the rest of the board where they are on that, some of those points. And the administration. I don't blame you, Dave. It's a hot topic.
So, I, I will make one comment. If the board has questions, I, you know, certainly we can, we can do our best. But our, our enrollment projections go out three more years. So, at some point closer to completion of the project, and, and we would probably, the board would decide it, it needs to do another demographic study anyway. And so, you could in two years do another demographic study and, you know, take that out further and see if this does need to, to be adjusted somehow or looked at differently. But I will say that the enrollment projections that we currently have have been almost spot on every year. So, when we say that, that we're basing some of our, our planning on the enrollment projections three years out, some people are questioning, well, we see teardowns, what if these, what if this attendance area pops, what if that attendance area pops, and some of those fluctuations occur naturally over time in communities, and, and we may not be able to predict with 100% accuracy every single thing that, you know, it'd be nice if we had a crystal ball. But I will say that over the last four years, you know, people want to kind of speculate as to how accurate, but so far, it's proven to be very, very accurate. So, I would just say that.
Karen?
Yes, I will also say, though, we've got most schools overcrowded, I mean, at capacity, I'm sorry, that's the word I would use, which I didn't think that we speculated that. Whether it's we, you know, just in the planning piece, so we do have to consider. So, to Margaret's point, what I would then foresee is, you know, having updates every year, is how is our enrollment doing based on the demographics? You know, as we register students, where are they coming in? What does it look like?
Sure, we would continue to do that. And, and, and I think, Chris, have we typically done that in October, every October? So, we will obviously continue to do that, yeah.
Dave, my understanding, the accuracy is good at a district level, but at a building level, it's ver, much more varied. And that's, I said this before, that's what scares me about this. It's the best we have. I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't, I'm not expecting to have a crystal ball, but historically, as I've met with a demographer, they've said that we can do it on a district level, but the margin of error at the building level is off. And so, we're making decisions on buildings and $168 million based upon projections, which probably have more margin for error, even though at the aggregate level, they're more, they're more exact, or they're, they're more spot on.
I do think that you're right. But I would say, I, I asked, I was trying to be as conservative as possible with staffing, so thank me for that if you want. But I asked them to, to build in the budget that Chris presented to you, the worst-case scenario in terms of if, if all the sections in the enrollment projections materialized. So, that's what we built into the staffing. But we actually initially started with the idea that if we rolled over our sections from this year, what would that look like? And there were some sections across the district where if the projections didn't materialize, we would not need to add more staff. And every single one of those that, that we had, you know, held back hoping that, you know, we might not need to, to hire additional staff for, we ended up having to do. So, I, I think you're right. I just, it is the best information we have now, and, and I think that at some point in, within the next couple of years, I would assume that the board would direct us to do another study.
Sure. And, and I get that, once they're in our system, the degree of precision gets much better because we're rolling cohort groups up. It's, it's really that, that kindergarten class that really impacts it. And, and so, and I, my point is, is just to Margaret's point, is, is that I can't tell you, I don't think any of us can tell you today, that we know exactly what's going to happen. We're going to plan a capacity construction based upon the best, but as it pertains to load balancing and whatnot, you know, we're better served to not set anything in stone today. So, that said, I mean, I think this entire discussion from the start was directed around, in my mind, I know all-day kindergarten was a big piece of it, but it was about class size. And I think about creating flexibility to keep class sizes small. And more important, and that's what I'd love the headline to be around what we're looking at when we talk about boundaries, is, is because we're running a neighborhood school system, it creates inefficiency in balancing class size. And what we're trying to do with boundary is, is keep that neighborhood character while at the same time creating some of that efficiency, so that we can free up money for all-day kindergarten or, or other things like that. So, in principle, that's what that is. And I think the question we asked initially was, how radical of a change would it be to try to do that? And I think when we went through all of these options, and, and while we settle on option D modified, I think what option D modified really reflects is maintaining walkability and impacting the fewest number of, of houses as possible. And then, and thank you for the grandfathering provision, you wrote it exactly the way I was hoping it would come out. And I think that's the other piece, which is, there's a promise to the folks that make a decision with their life savings. And so, yes, we should look at this. Our town changes. It changes over, you know, a lot, as you can see now. And so, to, to be able to, to, to say that we're not going to look at where population shifts happen over the course of decades, I think is, is foolish. And so, yes, we wanted to have this conversation. We wanted to say that there were most likely will be changes. In my mind, it's more about creating efficiency in class size than it is about anything else. And we're going to respect the, the purchasing decisions of folks when they bought their house, and this won't be something that's turned on overnight. I mean, and that's just kind of where I was trying to come out with this discussion.
I agree.
So, for option D modified, that kind of was sifted out from the other options, is that area get, would get to go to a substantially new school versus an overcrowded old school? So, there, I mean, there's that factor too, that, you know, might be something people are interested in. But again, we're, we're looking at this as something to provide flexibility, but it's nothing that has, you know, is set in stone right now.
The other thing is that those students in that affected area, south of Butterfield, we, and I didn't say this in, in my talking points, but we have talked about it before, and it's on the slide, would have the choice of going to Sandberg, which, which would be their natural feeder school, or going to Bryan if they so choose because of that being, you know, closer, maybe walkable, that kind of thing. So, so we, we built that into the middle school. We answered that question about the middle school piece because a lot of people wanted, wanted that answer. And so, we thought that we would be able, with the way things look right now, and our enrollment at the middle schools, to be able to accommodate that. So, we thought we should just accommodate that. We thought people would appreciate the, the choice.
Other comments? All right. So, we, this is where we are now, and we'll agree that we'll relook, you know, the board will look at this in the future again on a regular basis. Is that a fair summary of where we're at? Margaret, does that adequately address your concern?
Yes, we will continue to look at this and make decisions as we get closer to it. Yes. Thank you.
Next.
So, if you take a look at this, this just tries to simplify all of the information that we provided over time in multiple forms and multiple ways. Just to explain, there would be two new schools, there would be a major renovation at Edison and Madison, and this is assuming the comprehensive solution that was field-tested in the phone poll. There would be site-specific things that, that would be based on individual need. So, if you need safety and security upgrades, you get them. You would, the infrastructure would be addressed as part of renovations of the buildings. Future-ready learning would be included at all sites, but it might look different depending on the configuration of the buildings or the age levels of the schools. So, you know, the middle school programming's different than elementary school or whatever, technology, infrastructure being addressed. And then at the elementary levels, Jackson and Jefferson receiving air conditioning, you know, in addition to what you see in the "all-as-needed" column. Fisher staged with two additional classrooms. At the middle school level, Churchville and Auditorium. Bryan gets a main office renovation, which is due to safety and security. But the reason we included that is because by doing that, we also free up additional space for classrooms at that school. York, Auditorium, Health Careers Pathway, athletic field upgrades, and then noise remediation on the roof units. The Edison renovation adds seven classrooms, and that would give us, if, if option D modified were implemented by the time all-day kindergarten would roll up through all the grade levels at Edison with the boundary changes, there would be two additional classrooms at Edison that could be included in other types of long-term planning to provide some flexibility with demographic trends, enrollment growth, program changes that may occur for whatever reason, so that we don't open up a major construction project being at total capacity right upon completion of the project. And, and then the transition center, we're going to talk about a little bit later, but we want to make sure that all of our learning sites get the attention that they need and deserve. And so, we have been working on solutions to that outside of the referendum, but Carol will address that, I think, or somebody will address that a little bit later when we get to the ballot language. Or did you want to do that now?
I can do it now.
Okay.
So, the district has been searching for a permanent facility for a tran, transition center to serve our students with disabilities. The search has been underway for a long time, but has not yet produced a solution with a suitable location. The acquisition and development of a transition center should be included, we believe at this time, in the referendum question to be, to ensure that the district may use it for educational purposes. that the district may use it for educational purposes.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I think I should point out that within the state, we're required to occupy a building that we acquire to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Geis, but to have a referendum question to allow, even if somebody gave us a building, if we were going to use it for educational purposes, it had to be on a referendum, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, I think that's what we're saying, that I think to date, we haven't talked a lot about the transition center. It is an important piece of the puzzle. It will probably most likely be in a facility different than where it is now. Long-term, we have a lot of ideas. And as long as we're running a referendum, we would be foolish not to include that in that language, so that regardless of how we acquire that piece of land or building, or build a building, that we can occupy it. Because I don't want to have to do it again. Is that right?
Yes.
So what you're saying, Chris, and what you agreed to, is it's the referendum for occupying?
Correct.
I'm going to the next one.
Yeah, I had a quick question, just coming back. For "all-as-needed," could we call out the other schools there in that column, like Sandberg, Jefferson, Emerson? So we have all schools listed on this comprehensive solution?
Yeah, we can, we actually have the placards that we developed for community engagement and other pieces of information. I was just kind of trying to simplify that for the purposes of tonight, but when we do any kind of future communication or informational stuff, you know, we'll package that certainly, yes. So I was asked to kind of address in this summary, what would we do if we didn't move to a referendum? What would our options be? And, you know, the truth is, we don't have a lot of good ones. But I was going to let Chris kind of address this slide and talk a little bit about some of the different types of things we might have to do to address facilities in absence of a referendum.
So primarily, absence of referendum, the funding would need to come from the Operation and Maintenance Fund, one of our five operating funds. And as you know, the operating funds, the revenue stream for it is restricted. The Property Tax Extension Limitation Act limits us to CPI, plus the new construction is exempt from the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. So it's basically, our revenues for the operating funds is CPI plus new construction. On average, over the past 20 years, CPI has been about 2%. Our new construction has been about, for us, about 1% per year, sometimes a little more. So about, so our revenues for the operating funds in general go up about 3% a year. So then, on the expenditure side, we're always trying to live within the 3%, within our revenue streams. And our expenditures, as you know, being a service organization, are primarily salaries and benefits. About 80% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So then, trying to work, as Todd talked about, we have some pretty significant maintenance needs. It would be extremely difficult for us to put that into the Operation Maintenance Fund. The way we would do it would be to increase our tax levy significantly in the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And basically, it would have to come out of the Education Fund, which is our primary fund for funding our core service that we provide. So it would impact, so we would have to reduce the revenue stream for the Education Fund because we would be increasing the revenue stream in the Operations and Maintenance Fund. As far as our fund balance is concerned, as you know, our fund balance has gotten to a point that we, our fund balance policy is 26% of our fund balance to expenditure ratio of 26%. When that policy was determined, the idea was that at our cash flow low point, which is in May, we didn't want to have to borrow in order to pay bills. So that is how the 26% was determined. Last June, we were at about 43%. So that did give us some, when the way it's been described here is runway, runway for the, for things that could impact our financials in the future, like a potential pension cost shift or something else, some other property tax freeze, those type of things that could impact our finances. But our significant needs, and I started here seven years ago. Before I started, the decision was made to not sink more money into maintaining a lot of the equipment and facilities at Lincoln, just that it wouldn't be prudent to continue to put good money after, you know, that, the thought at that time was Lincoln would need a referendum. That was when I started here seven years ago. We were already, it was already saying, let's not keep sinking money into maintaining facilities at Lincoln because it was going to, it was going to need a referendum very soon to replace Lincoln. So there are significant needs at Lincoln that would need a pretty big infusion of money. So I guess, I guess it would really, really be difficult on our operating funds to try and just maintain our facilities. Generally speaking, we've been trying, we've been using our summer maintenance projects on paving and roofing and masonry projects for the past seven years. Or since I've been here, it seems like we've done a lot of summer work projects in that area. Few other things here and there. But we've always just tried to keep the buildings functioning and maintaining status quo level of facilities.
I don't know if anybody wants to comment, but, you know, that's essentially kind of our dilemma at this point, so.
Jim?
If you want to talk about this later in the discussion, I'm fine with that, but this seems to fit in right here. There are many school districts that have a, and Chris helped me with the correct term here.
Debt service extension base.
Thank you.
DECEB.
A DECEB. That's the acronym I can never figure out. But thank you for telling me what the DECEB means. So going to the voter, asking for this debt service extension base. Currently, we spend a million and a half roughly per year on maintenance. Let's call that $2 million, just to keep the numbers easy. We asked the voter to approve in a separate referendum, one that would run, you know, on the same ballot, whichever ballot we choose to put this larger referendum on, for a DECEB of debt service of $2 million a year, say. And then, what we do is we borrow $6 million for a three-year term, so we pay off $2 million a year. If you borrow for three years, about 95% of the money you borrow is going toward those maintenance projects. And about 5% is going toward, just as a rule of thumb, toward interest payments. What we did after the 2006 referendum, all those projects came in under budget. So there was an excess of borrowed funds, which we put in that maintenance budget. And we were able to perform the district's maintenance with that excess money for about 10 years. Unfortunately, we borrowed the money for 20 years. So we did the projects over 10 years. And, you know, it's like you, you know, you're at your house closing and you're taking out a 30-year mortgage, and you say, gee, I borrowed a half a million dollars, and looks like I'm paying the bank back a million dollars. Well, on a 20-year term, if you borrow $10 million, you're going to pay about an additional 7.5% in interest. To me, that's not as fiscally responsible as we could be. I would suggest that we take care of, once and for all, our maintenance budgeting needs by asking the voter to approve this DECEB channel, where we can go out and borrow three years at a time and have that money go toward maintenance instead of interest. And any further explanation can be provided by Elizabeth Annesey. Are you inviting her to? I am going to leave it to you as to when you want to have that discussion tonight, whether it be right now or later.
Well, I think that since we already started it, I would say, might as well do it now.
Okay.
So Jim is right. I mean, there is a mechanism called the debt service extension base. The district has a debt service extension base. It's a random number that goes back to 1994. It's part of the tax limitation law. And whatever dollars you extended to pay principal and interest on non-referendum bonds, such as life safety bonds, working cash bonds, became frozen and defined as your debt service extension base. For the district, that number right now is $1,377. It increases by CPI each year since 2009. The law was amended for that. So back in 2013, I believe, or '14, in conjunction with one of our referendums, we did a small life safety bond issue to help with some of this maintenance. And because there were already bonds being paid from that debt service extension base, we had to stretch it out about 13 years. So the interest cost was higher because of that. Not because of the rate environment, just because you're paying interest over a longer period of time. I think what Jim is suggesting is that we look at a referendum to increase that debt service extension base from $1,377, increase it up by $2 million, for example. Looking at the idea that you could roll over bonds every two to three years, pay a very low interest rate, simply because the bonds are paid off so quickly, and use a majority of that principal to keep up the facility so you don't get into another situation. Now, the referendum question itself is something that needs to be explained carefully to the voters because by reading it, they're not going to understand, perhaps, exactly what you're getting at or why you're asking for this. The question reads, "Shall the debt service extension base under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law for Elmhurst Community Unit District 205, DuPage and Cook Counties, for the payment of principal and interest on limited bonds be increased, for example, from $1,137,000 to $3,377,000 for the 2019 levy year and all subsequent levy years, such that the debt service extension base to be increased each year by the lesser of 5% or the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index during the 12-month calendar year preceding year?" So the question needs a lot of explanation, I think, to the voters. But what it does is it gives you the ability to leverage more principal at a lower interest cost towards maintaining your facilities. The positive is that that debt service extension base, if approved by the voters, never, it never expires. You don't have to use it every year if you don't need it. You don't have to use it, but it never goes away. It allows for short-term bond issues to address capital and maintenance needs. The disadvantage is it's an unclear description of, on the ballot, and so it takes some time to explain to the voters what it's for. Obviously, you're looking at a big capital plan right now. So the other consideration is, gosh, if we put two questions on the ballot, would people be confused? Another thought for you is that these debt service extension bonds that you have outstanding right now, they do expire in 2025. So another thought would be, if you pass the capital referendum that you're talking about putting on the ballot maybe in November, get through those projects. Just as you're finishing up those projects, the debt service extension bonds that are currently outstanding will be about ready to fall off. And it might be an idea to consider it at that point in time because then you'll be more in the maintenance mode going forward. So there's lots to talk about here. I wanted to try to give, you know, respond to your question. I do think it's an excellent mechanism for addressing annual capital needs and keeping your buildings up so you don't get in a deferred maintenance position. But it is a separate question.
Thank you. And I realize this is a new topic for several board members, and I apologize for making this a new topic. But we brought it up in a finance committee several years ago. And as I was preparing for this meeting, I thought, well, I'm most likely not going to be on the school board. This is the only referendum I will ever be on the school board for. And so, in 2006, that board spent, or I should say, our community spent a lot of time and effort explaining why the community should vote yes twice, once for a capital outlay referendum, and a second time in order to staff it, to increase the operating fund, to hire the teachers, to staff those new classrooms. So we are presenting the community at this time with a capital referendum to build and maintain new buildings, a lot of new things. And there are going to be community members spending an enormous amount of time and resources explaining to the community what this referendum is all about. So it seems appropriate to put this referendum on that same ballot, no matter how, no matter how awkwardly, how awkwardly worded the rules, you know, make it sound. But as long as the community is spending a lot of time and effort explaining what the referendum is all about, you're spending a lot of money building things, let's let the community also approve maintaining them forever. That way, we don't run into future circumstances where we have to dig into the education fund, dig into the operating budget in order to maintain facilities. And Elmhurst then has well-maintained facilities for decades to come. It seems like, and again, I should have brought this up weeks ago. It didn't dawn on me until I was preparing for this meeting, that this would be an appropriate time to bring this concept up again, see what the board thought about it. And I realize there's a layer of confusion by having two questions on the ballot, especially the way this one is worded. But it resolves, it resolves a lot of headaches for future boards in terms of coming up with funding. And it is the most capital-efficient way where we spend our, the money that we borrow on the things we intended for it to be used on and a minimal amount on interest expense. No, that's my point, and I apologize that this may be new information for a lot of people.
Can you just, and if you said this, or it's in there, and I don't, what would be the cost to a taxpayer for this? Or could you?
So, you know, just in the example that we talked about, just as an example, adding $2 million to the debt service extension base. For a $500,000 home, it would be $134.08 on the tax rate.
On its own, just to clarify, so on its own, it would be $134, is that what you said?
$134 for the example of 2 million increase on the debt service extension base.
Okay.
There's a packet coming around that I'm not sure, did any other board member get this financing update?
No.
Oh, there's one, okay. I've never seen that. Okay.
No one answered.
No one. Oh, okay. All right, there you go, gentlemen.
Just, yeah, a question. I know we've talked about this, and I understand this kind of evergreen borrowing thing. The other aspect of it, though, is maintenance is an operating expense and not a capital expense. And, I mean, ultimately, rather than borrowing money three years at a time and paying it back, is there a way to, basically, the question being, why don't we fund the O&M fund, $2 million bucks a year for the rest of its life? I mean, can you levy and dedicate it directly? Then you wouldn't have any interest cost. You would borrow it as you needed it. And the referendum question would just be, you know, a levy of $2 million a year that goes directly into the O&M fund to maintain all this stuff we just built?
It would actually be a limiting rate question, a rate increase question, and you'd put that money in the operating fund. The board would decide.
But within the referendum itself, it would be a limiting rate question for the express purpose of putting it in the O&M fund?
Right. The express purpose could not be on the ballot question, but you could, of course, as a board, make that your intent and policy.
Okay, so there's no way for an operating fund levy to be connected just to the O&M fund?
That's correct. That's since tax caps. Yeah.
We could just increase the levy every year for that purpose.
Right, but I would want to make sure that it goes to that purpose.
We can.
And so, you know, the idea is to have it dedicated there so it's not used for something else because it's probably the easiest thing to try to repurpose if you have issues, but it's also the thing that has the biggest impact several years down the road.
We can do that.
So, yeah, I mean, that would just be my question from an efficiency standpoint, would be to just go ahead and levy for the money and put it straight into the fund rather than borrow it three years at a time and even pay any interest on it?
Yes, that sounds easy. However, school boards all the time run into, we don't have enough money. And what we do, what, we, we haven't done this, but other school boards find themselves deferring maintenance when they run out of money. And they just take from that fund that sounds so easy on paper, but in practicality, when funding gets tight, when all these other things that may or may not occur, pension levies, et cetera, et cetera, you know, what will a future board do?
But is that question more limiting then? I mean, the question that Jim was asking for, my understanding when we discussed this before, was you couldn't guarantee that the boards didn't borrow, future boards didn't borrow that money for something other than maintaining the facilities either.
There is an option if they decide to issue taxable bonds, that they could use it for operations. There is that possibility. A future board could use it for something different.
Okay.
But they could not issue tax-exempt bonds as we do.
Correct.
They would have to actually have taxable bonds.
Correct. An issue of tax-exempt bonds must be used for capital.
I guess the other issue is, is you've got $1,004,000 of current levy that in 2025 frees up for additional, so you may need 2 million now, but in 2025, you get, you only need 600,000 of it additional to get to the, if you want 2 million a year free, right, that's why you're making, that's why you're increasing this by 2 million, that you get $1,004,000 back into that base come 2025.
Right.
So can you, I mean, can you make it such that the total levy is never more than, or, I mean, can you sunset it?
You don't have to use it all. It doesn't sunset, but you never have to use it all. In fact, you don't have to use any of it if you don't need it, and it doesn't go away, which is a great thing about it.
Could you ask for, you know, if the difference is 600,000, could you ask for 600,000 in 2025?
You would ask for it now.
Right.
But you wouldn't issue the bonds till 2025.
Until 2025. So another alternative.
It's really a smaller number.
Right, a much smaller number. And we're talking about finishing construction in 20, well, not really, a lot of this stuff isn't going to come online until 2025.
That's correct. I think it's the 24, 25 school year that is, that would be the year that all of the buildings would open under, you know, be completed with all the projects. But I don't have that in front of me, but I think it's a 2024, 25 school year.
Elizabeth, would your advice be, you know, ask for that in 2025? It's just to put a referendum question on the ballot that is so awkwardly worded because that's the rules, and to put the time and effort and expense to explain to taxpayers what they're voting on for such a small amount, I mean, it just doesn't seem worth it. The reason I'm bringing it up now is because there's going to be a lot of time and efforts spent explaining to voters what we're doing and why. It just seems like a more appropriate time to bring it up now. And I'm just throwing it out there to think about.
John?
Just to clarify for the laypersons around here, this money won't be borrowed if it is indeed for building maintenance for several years. Extremely muddies the water at a critical time from my point of view, and I'm sitting here listening to the explanation of the experts.
But the reality is, you're either to do it now, you're not going to put that referendum on the ballot in 2025. It just takes too much effort to explain it to voters. And that's the practicality of it.
But in having this explanation ride along with the other one, you might be distracting and overburdening.
And then what will happen is that, assuming these projects come in under budget, we'll take that excess and we'll spend it over the next however many years, and we'll pay it back over 20 years. And that's spending a lot of money in interest.
But that's borrowed anyway.
No, it doesn't have to be borrowed.
So you're suggesting a smaller capital referendum?
Remember, we're borrowing this money, remember, we're borrowing this money in three different sections. If the first two phases of your construction project come in under budget, instead of borrowing the full amount in Phase Three, you just take what Phase Three was going to borrow and subtract the amount of, that you've come in under budget in the first two phases. And so essentially, you're immediately returning that money to taxpayers. And you can do that because you know that you have a mechanism to maintain all the stuff you just built. So think about that.
For six days.
I've never, I haven't been on the finance committee, so this is brand-new information for me, so I need to look at this, and like, I've never, I've never discussed this. So I'm just, I don't know what to say about it right now.
Then let's move on.
Okay.
Well, I do want to thank you for bringing this up because I do think it's important. It's a discussion that needs to be considered, and I haven't, I haven't been a part of these discussions either. So if I, I heard a couple options thrown out, this DSEP, and then I also heard, Chris, you mentioned, and Elizabeth, you called it, what was it, a limiting, what was it, limiting?
A limiting rate referendum is what you do for operating funds, which if you, maintenance is something you spend out of your operating funds in the O&M fund for capital, so it's part of your O&M fund.
So, and I agree that we probably couldn't get a good discussion on this right now, but can we have something that talks about these two options? Can we get a little more information on these two options and understand kind of what those, what it might, what the difference would be in these two and how they might be enacted? Is that something?
Well, we have to vote on Tuesday, so it, I mean, we can get you whatever information you need for Tuesday, but, I mean, that's, the decision has to be made on Tuesday, and I, depending on, I can't speak to how complicated it would be to be able to provide whatever information it is you want at this point. I would say that I think philosophically, it's a good idea. If we get this passed and we have, Todd has the ability to put a master plan together, a facility needs that coincide with the referendum and the needs at each individual building, and we take into account into that plan reallocating existing money into the older buildings that need it and different things, you know, 2025, when that other bond falls off, it may seem like a lot of work for a small amount of money, but my personal comfort level is that explaining what we're currently proposing to do is going to be a challenge in and of itself, and I would be afraid that we would take a chance that both questions could get voted down, or, I mean, I just, I don't know, I just feel that we have people that are, have asked various questions at different points in the project. I've been told by our architects that this project is a little bit more complicated than most projects to begin with, and so we have communication challenges that are going to be relatively significant as it stands. So I'm a little nervous about injecting that into things, but I do understand there's a solid rationale for it. I just don't know if, I don't know making that case and upping the ask and different things at this point, it just makes me a little on the uncomfortable side.
Karen?
Can I ask a clarifying question to see if I understood what you, I think, Jim, in the beginning, you were talking, and Elizabeth, you had stated, comparison to other districts? There's other districts that do this? Is it a common? And then if that's the case, when do they execute those?
So this is a referendum that has been passed with other districts. It's not as common as a capital referendum, but it's been done, and it's been done successfully. But like any referendum, it takes a very clear explanation of what it's for. Typically, when the debt service extension base question goes on, the district's going to utilize that pretty immediately. So in this case, that might not be the case, given the larger capital. So I think that's something to consider, something more to explain, and it certainly is a trust level, right, with the board and the community. But it definitely is a question that districts have successfully passed.
And to clarify, they've successfully passed it when they put both referendum questions on the ballot?
I have not seen a double question, including a debt service extension based question. That doesn't mean, I haven't seen every referendum in the world, but I personally have not seen two questions with a debt service extension base and a capital together myself.
So I guess that was my original question that I was thinking we might get to, which is, at what point do they then put this referendum question on after they've done capital, is what I'm assuming?
Well, it just, every situation is different, so, but it is, it's a different mechanism for getting money into capital through bonding.
So I feel like it's something that, it brings up the topic of finding ways to be proactive in addressing our facility needs over time, but personally, this, you know, we've spent three years essentially in interacting with the community, and I feel very uncomfortable pulling something out that even, you know, we would take, need time to digest and be able to articulate, and if I'm understanding it right, it would be an additional tax impact on the, on our taxpayers, right?
Yes, if it was extended right away, yeah.
And so, you know, that, that's, it feels like at this point, a lot to ask of people, but that's, you know, at this point in the process.
Karen, I only brought it up because I don't plan on being in this chair in 2025. It is a way to save taxpayers a significant amount of money because if you don't do it this way, you're going to, you're going to raise that money another way, or you're not going to maintain your buildings. And this is just a very cost-effective way to do it by not borrowing long-term and by solidifying your maintenance funds for a very long time. So that's the only reason I bring it up.
Good. I think it makes us think, and also good for us to think about the future and how facilities are addressed. Any other comments? John?
Just thinking about your scenario, Jim. If the capital is larger, wouldn't this be appropriate to do it at the end, at the third phase of?
I just want to get the idea out there and socialized. You might, maybe Todd comes up here in December.
The Collins Concept?
Maybe Todd comes up here in December and it looks like a better idea after he's done. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth.
So, oh, was there somebody else I thought? So if we're going to go in November, August 14th is our deadline to approve the language for a ballot question. So if you could go to the next slide. I tried to put down my opinion based on our experts that have advised us on referendums and our own experience and knowledge of what the potential pros and cons would be for November versus moving, moving the timeline back to some other election cycle. And, well, there was a lot of conventional wisdom about, like, off-year elections, April elections and referendums. What people are finding out with voter trends is that you tend to get more older voters that don't have kids in school at some of those other election cycles, where at general elections, you will get a younger demographic with kids who might be more inclined to be empathetic about your particular needs. And so, but what complicates that even further in this case is that April's a school board election, and if we try to put a referendum on the ballot in April, the whole school board election becomes about the referendum. And what we've all experienced in our past lives is that when you do that, there is a lot of ugliness that can occur that doesn't just affect the potential positive outcome of the referendum question, but can affect, you know, different aspects of the organization. So it would be very difficult for any of us to recommend April. And with what we are anticipating, a high turnout election in November, because of various different things that are going on statewide and around the country, there is a lot of thinking that November is a much better date. And of course, pushing it back past April, you know, would then, you know, push it back even further. even further. There is a cost escalation component that can occur as you, you know, if you were to delay beginning the projects. Also, deferred maintenance continues to increase the longer we tread water on this issue. It does expedite the programming enhancements that directly impact the students if we are able to be successful sooner rather than later, as well as the safety and security upgrades that the community has been very persistent about wanting us to take seriously and pursue. I think it preserves the momentum of the community engagement process. I think that if we do not go in November, that we would be restarting, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of investment that a lot of people across the community have made in this, and to reengage them and start this process kind of at the ground level and possibly with a new Board of Education would be very, very challenging to do. And it does respect the investment of time and resources that have been allocated to the project over the past three years. Some of the cons in November, it does condense the timeline for the information campaign that would be required and the PAC activities that would be necessary for success. A con of, kind of the corresponding box of minimizing the cost escalation or increased deferred maintenance is that if you don't go in November, it increases the likelihood of expending funds on buildings that will ultimately be replaced, which is something that Chris alluded to previously. So, you know, there are different, I know one of you has brought up the fact that if you were to be able to bond the project differently, where you wouldn't do refinancing or various different types of things would be taken into account, that, you know, the cost escalation question could be perhaps mitigated a little bit, but that's, that's how, I guess, as an administrative point of view, and ultimately, it's a board decision, but I do think it's, that I have a responsibility to share this information, an obligation to do it, and from an administrative point of view, this is, this is the way we see and look at whether or not November seems to make the most sense. So, that's, those are my thoughts. I felt it was important to share them. I don't know if people want to have a lot of conversation around those points in particular, but the board is going to have to decide tonight if it wants us to put that motion on the agenda for the 14th. And if it decides it does, then we can take a look at the corresponding ballot language.
Margaret?
First, thank you very much, Dave, for putting these out there. I think it's important to be able to see them. But I'm not quite sure, I understand the second con, why that's a con of putting it on in November. And if you wouldn't mind explaining that to me again, on why that's a con of putting it on in November.
Actually, I guess it's not a con of putting it on November, it's just, it's more of a con if we chose not to. I guess maybe it's a little bit misplaced there, so, well, it's actually, yeah, it's, I guess it just reinforces the point on the other side, but it is probably misplaced to include it in that column, in that particular box. That's a good point.
Other comments about November?
I'll go. I mean, I think the purpose of tonight, there are a couple of big questions in my mind around getting the consensus and all the kindergarten, the approach to that, to boundaries, to grandfathering, to some of the open-ended items. Thank you for putting this together, because it kind of encapsulated all the work that we've done. I think that the discussion about November is going to happen on Tuesday. I mean, that's why we're, that's the purpose of having a vote. So, I mean, personally, would like to spend some time, I'd like to have the conversation on Tuesday, I guess I'd say, but I'm not going to tell you where I'm coming out until I spend some time digesting everything that's here in the totality of it and really thinking about, about where we end up. But, you know, I don't think asking for a vote tonight is appropriate. Let's have that conversation on Tuesday, and I'm in favor of that.
John?
I think we should prepared, be prepared for the vote on Tuesday to go either way and have a full discussion, as Chris says, to get to that. So, I would agree, let's hold that discussion on Tuesday.
But we'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday.
Absolutely, put it on the agenda.
That was the question, should we put it on the agenda?
Yes.
So, we put it on the agenda for Tuesday.
Right, it wasn't scheduled for discussion tonight.
Put it on the agenda for Tuesday, a discussion and a motion to whether to turn it on, put it on in November. Is that clear?
As mud.
So, go to the next slide then. Please, Dave. So, that's the draft language as it currently stands, and then we'll go back to bond council, and we will get the appropriate language included in there to cover the potential for the transition center that may need to be included in the referendum planning if we don't under, you know, find viable solutions otherwise. And that will be on the agenda on Tuesday then.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions? All right. So, that gets us through the items under agenda item 5. There is no board communication or superintendent's agenda action that will, or agenda action item that will be done tonight, so we are at the end of the meeting. The upcoming meetings are on Monday, August 13th. There's a policy meeting at 7:00 PM here in District 205 Building. There is a board meeting Tuesday, August 14th, at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, August 28th, there's a Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. If there are no other comments, the meeting is adjourned.